Let's begin the meeting, and this is the Common Council Sidewalk Committee meeting on Tuesday, December 15, 2020. We're going to pick up from our last meeting where we're going to discuss committee criteria and processes, disclosure of any conflict of interest, presentation of preliminary evaluation by the Planning Department, using it as objective measures, and then we want to get to discussing project priorities, sidewalk and traffic calming and pedestrian facility projects. We'll have some public comment. We'll look at some future meetings and discuss any other matters and then adjourn. So if we take off from the last meeting, we were just starting to talk about some criteria. So Mr. Lucas, if you'll display some of the criteria that we were starting to discuss last time, let's have a brief discussion on the criteria.
So these are the, when I see number Rallo is, it's just training. These are the committees' policies that have been used in the past. I did want to clarify a point from the last meeting. The committee revised its overhead policy back in 2018 to allow for shifts in funds from one project to the other, up to 25% of the project estimate, or to an absolute amount of $45,000. I think there was an outdated version of this policy that was included, so just a note there. And then this is the list of objective factors that are meant to kind of operationalize the committee's criteria and the committee left off last week, I think, discussing both these criteria and the committee process itself. So I know we've got Mallory here and other folks from Planning and Transportation that can weigh in on questions specific to any of these factors. And I'm happy to discuss the committee's processes.
Well, I guess I'd like to throw open the floor to committee members. Do we have comments or concerns about the council sidewalk criteria that we can entertain discussing at this point? Yes, Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think at our last meeting, and it could be, I hope I'm not wrong with this, but Ms. Rosenbarger in Planning and Transportation, I believe, indicated that in the near future, they were going to begin working on updating the criteria. I think we've all kind of indicated it needs to be updated and changed. So with our discussion today, I'm not so sure what we could add or take away during this time. It might be more prudent to, we can't wait for that update, have some input on the process of them updating. And I think, for an example, the sidewalk report that we got from Mr. Stockberg, for an example, I think I pronounced his name right. I think there were some very good points in there that could possibly be incorporated in the updated criteria, which I think long term would help alleviate some of the current concerns that were raised. So I just want to give those thoughts. I work in midstream here, I'm not so sure about doing a whole lot of things with revamping our approach for this particular year. But I am looking forward to, and it definitely needs to be updated. I think it's more about timing and input from, you know, more than just the folks at PNT.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? It sounds like, and I would tend to agree that we can pretty much, we're at the point where we still have to operate under this criteria, but moving forward will change based on some further development. Mr. Rallo or Ms. Rosenbarger, would you, Kate, would you like to have a comment on the criteria and processes?
Yes, thank you. Okay. I don't, I'm sorry, I feel a little scattered, but I'm just looking at my notes. I, you know, at the end of last meeting, brought into question in terms of an equitable approach, whether or not, honestly, this, having a city council committee in general is decreasing the equity in how we distribute these funds for sidewalks. So, and that did come from Mark Stockberg's report and recommendation to give this decision-making back to Planning and Transportation, and I think engineering actually would also be included because I, I mean, I would need clarification on a lot of these things, so staff anytime, but I think the alternative transportation budget is now housed in the engineering department. So I would assume it would be like a joint effort for deciding how this funding is allocated. And also, I wouldn't mind some clarification. I'm going to ask some questions and then hopefully maybe these could be addressed by staff. Right now, we have this funding that gets allocated every year. Okay, so it's $330,000 for 2021. Is that part of the alternative transportation budget and then part of it stays in engineering? So that if this committee ceased to exist, would that $330,000 go back to that budget? Also, who determines how much this budget is? Is that, I mean, I get that the administration puts the budget together, but is that how, like, do we pick our part at all, or does the mayor just say, here's your amount for this year? I would like to talk about, so that's about the budget. I could stop right there, maybe, and have those questions answered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
And Neil, I don't know if you were wanting to jump in on that question about the budget or any other part of that. Part of the committee's funding comes from excess revenues from the neighborhood parking permit program. I do think that that doesn't fully fund the committee's the amount that the committee has this year. And I don't know, folks, that may be a question for the controllers to how much comes from those revenues versus the general fund essentially, or other funding sources. But the council office budget itself is where this committee's pot of money is housed. And so if a recommendation from the committee were to come forward to the full council to either shift that money or reallocate it to a different location, I think that would need to be in the form of an additional appropriation ordinance. Again, it could could be something that the council or this committee requests from the administration, but I think that would be the mechanism of moving that money. And I'm happy to follow up with the controller if you'd like a breakdown of how much comes from the neighborhood parking permit program versus support from other funds. But I can also chime in that in, at least for the last several years, the amount made available to the committee has basically gone up by some percentage meant to keep pace with inflation. So last year, there were, I think, $324,000. This year, it was 330. It's increased by similar increments in past years. And that comes, I think, out of just past practice. I think the administration has been supportive of this committee's work in the past and has wanted to to fund that work, so. And Neil, Kate, I don't know what other questions I missed at the start of that, but Neil, if you have anything to add, or Kate, if I missed any questions.
Oh, I don't know if there's any questions that I'll answer that you didn't, but I can confirm Councilmember Rosenbarger was, I think, kind of asking whether the, whether the alt-trans budget, whether there's a piece of that in engineering's budget. Just confirm that there is generally that's, we think of that as somewhat prioritized by the Planning Department, so we work closely with them. And then engineering is, we're the ones that actually administer the contracts and kind of do the projects themselves. So the budget is housed within, or the funding is housed within our budget. It comes from the same, I believe, the same pot of money that the council sidewalk committee's funds come from. And then, yeah, I'll echo that if the intent was to leave that budget, you know, back to planning slash engineering, it could either be re-appropriated or even instead of this committee specifying certain projects, you know, we want you to spend this much on this project and this much on this project. It could just be maybe a more general statement, but that it would be prioritized along with the rest of our budget. I'm not sure exactly how that would work.
Okay, thank you. And so, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, is there a follow-up question to that? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Just because, yeah, I asked a lot of questions in there at once. I wanted to know, I think, our, so our portion of alternative transportation budget is 330. Is that how you say it? And like, would you know what is the alternative transportation budget then that is in engineering? Like, how much is that?
It's a similar amount. I don't have the exact dollar, but 300 and something.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Rallo?
Just to follow up to Mr. Lucas, if you query Mr. Underwood, could you also, could we find out, maybe provide clarity of if this money is derived from the parking permit fund? Geographically, where it's derived in the city? Like, where are most permits issued?
All right, that's, and then you'll, pardon me. And then you'll send those out to all the committee members, right?
Yes, I'm happy to make that, those responses available to the committee in public. I, that may be information, and this doesn't matter, but that needs to come from Parking Enforcement. But I imagine they would have that data, so I'll follow up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rallo?
I've got a response, this is the appropriate time, just Councilmember Rosenbarger talked about, you know, whether this committee should exist, or, you know, whether it should have a budget. And I had something to, you know.
Please, please reflect on that. I think right now we were kind of deciding that the criteria is acceptable right now, and we've kind of moved on to other things, so please respond.
Yeah, well, I think that the criteria are good, but probably need revamping. And we were talking about including, you know, equitable distribution throughout the city and that sort of thing, which I think is a good consideration that should be included. I think that, as I said last time, what should be subtracted, I think, from our consideration are the mega projects that we're never going to be able to complete unless we were to devote our entire fund for five years or something like that. Those things need to come from a different source. It seems to me that that's beyond the scope with this committee was supposed to do in the beginning, which was, you know, fill in deficiencies and, you know, focus on connectivity and things like that. But I just, I had a general comment about, you know, being, having been on this committee since 2003, that for one thing, every member of the council, I think, at some point that's been on this committee, and those even that haven't, have asked for increasing funding for the sidewalk committee because of, you can see the long list that we have to accomplish. And so it's really been kind of a major task to just try to lobby to get more funding. And so, you know, the administration has been, has been good about trying to keep parity with inflation and so forth. And I'm not sure that that's actually been achieved. Sidewalks were much cheaper back in the day, and they're much more now. I would say probably twice, twice as expensive, maybe more than they used to be in the early aughts. So, but this has been hard-won money. I think that council has really, really lobbied to get the budget to where it's at. And, you know, because we have a strong mayor system, the American Direct funding to places that he or she feels is a priority for the city, which is good. And the council gets kind of a lot less. And so we would be really, really reticent about giving up our control of that budget. And then lastly, in this list of criteria, is where the actual connection to our constituents. So we go to neighborhood meetings. We ask people, where do you see deficiencies? What would you do? You know, how many people here work at Catalent? How many people here work at university? How would you get there? Are there deficiencies in your way, your means of getting to work, or your means of getting to transit, or getting to a major shopping center or something like that? So I think we fill an important gap, and if anything, we get too little money for all of the projects that we have to, that we aim to complete. So that's just general reflections. I have more, but I've talked a lot, so I'll let it go at that. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the city administration people, is there, are there other funds, additional funds that, such as Mr. Rallo was speaking about? Is there another way to get more funds for sidewalks in the city that maybe you'd like to describe to us? You know, in brief, to give us an idea? Mr. Copper or Ms. Rosenbarger? Any thoughts?
I can, I can chime in on some of that. You know, the question, are there other funds is kind of a big one. Because of course, the, you know, the city has a very large budget compared to what we're talking about here. So there's questions about how are you, or how is the city allocating its funds, which doesn't seem quite what you're asking. Other, there are outside sources of funds that we use. The biggest one being federal funding allocated through our MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so there is a process where we apply for federal funds for transportation projects. Those are typically the, you know, the bigger projects that we do. They frequently include sidewalk work, but most often aren't standalone sidewalk projects, just because somewhat the efficiency of doing those large projects. And also, in order to, in order to compete with prioritization for those funds, it's beneficial to have a varied project, so that you're checking a lot of boxes and getting a lot of different points to actually get prioritized. The other, there are occasionally grant funds that are available. The Community Crossings matching grant is one that we go for here in Indiana. Those specifically cannot be used for sidewalk funds, unfortunately. That's, that's the, that's what initially comes to my mind if any other staff want to weigh in, or if there are more specific questions, I'd be happy to.
I have a semi-follow up to that, that you might, I would like to ask is, so we have in this, for this committee, $330,000. For a year, what does the city spend on sidewalks? Is there a way to to just kind of ballpark that for us?
Off the top of my head, I'm not going to offer you a ballpark. We have in the past, we have separated out spending on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, which in itself is already a challenge, because we're talking about projects that include so many different things, and they're just, they're not parsed out that way. We, I mean, I'll just generally say we do spend a lot more on sidewalks than just what the, you know, the council sidewalk committee is spending. I would say it's a minority of the amount that we spend on sidewalks.
Okay, Mr. Sims?
Thank you. I think your questions, I'm not so sure if I, I don't want to speak for you, but I think the information you're seeking is probably more of an administrative question through the controller and where they pull funds from as far as the makeup of that. And that's something, and not to put more on Mr. Lucas's plate, but I think that's probably a good start to getting what it is as far as you're concerned with the breakdown from a revenue stream breakdown. I think that'll give you a much clearer picture. And while I'm still speaking, if I can, I again want to support Planning and Transportation plans to update the criteria, which will have more input or have input from us and others, other organizations and other commissions or boards or whatever. I think it's time for an update. So again, I just want to repeat that. I also think many of the points that came up in the sidewalk equity audit can be considered and maybe incorporated so that we're a more equitable criteria and in application. And lastly, I will support and just piggyback on what Councilmember Rallo said. I think this fund is important to be under the auspices of the city council. I cannot, at this point, I will not support dissolution of this committee. Even though moving forward could be a consideration, I think is worth further discussion. But as it is now, I think there's more involved than just funding and shifting funds. So I just wanted to throw that in there, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. So we've kind of, oops, Mr. Rallo?
Sorry, just to add, I think in our consideration of all these projects, it would be good, and we often do hear from Planning and Transportation in terms of what other projects they have in mind, and especially trail projects, because a lot of the trail projects are, some of them have been MPO-funded. Some of them are filling gaps that we don't have to replicate, you know, in terms of trying to build a parallel sidewalk somewhere. So, you know, getting that kind of package is a good idea when we go into this process of, you know, where are we already applying pedestrian facilities in the form of trails? Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, I think perhaps we should move to the next section is we're going to ask if there, anyone has disclosures of any conflict of interest. Do you live on the sidewalk, I guess? Is that, is that the, we're just trying to figure out? And then if, and if we do, then Mr. Lucas has a document that we'll need to sign, is that correct, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, so this is an opportunity for any committee members who may benefit from any of the projects on the list. If a sidewalk were to be constructed, that would bring a financial benefit to the individual that lived along that location. So if committee members have any conflicts of interest they'd like to disclose, there's a state form that you may need to fill out before the full council acts on any funding recommendations. So this is an opportunity, if you do live along any of the requested sidewalk locations, to make that known. And I don't know if any members do, but
I have no, I have no conflict of interest. Anybody else have a concern? Mr. Rallo?
Just a point of clarity, Mr. Lucas, when you say live along, is it within a certain radius, or is it, is it, is it like a project that you would anticipate using? Is that what we, how we, or is it, is it the one that is in front of your house? Or, you know, how do, how do we evaluate that?
I believe in the past, it's been essentially if it's in front of your house, because typically the homeowner would be responsible for building that. So this could, in effect, take away an expense that would otherwise be that property owner's. If it's, if it's in your neighborhood, I think that's too removed. You know, sidewalks anywhere, you know, could theoretically benefit anyone. So if it's in front of your house, essentially.
Gotcha, thank you.
All righty, please communicate to Mr. Lucas, should you feel like you have a conflict of interest. Let's move to the next section, presentation of preliminary evaluation by the Planning Department using objective measures. I would say, Ms. Rosenbarger and/or Mr. Copper? Do your thing.
Hi, this is Beth Rosenbarger, Planning and Transportation. Maybe I'll start with, I was a little confused, and I did put together some data that was based on what we discussed previously. Honestly, because we have it and it's simple to put together, it's not like a new ranking system. It's just, here's some data on a map for for thinking about, and that we have Mallory looked up some other cities and how they do rankings and kind of provided a proposal of what we could do with it. But, so, otherwise, I am happy to go through that, which is just four maps I put together. We're happy to kind of answer questions about the current prioritization chart that Mallory put together. So what, how shall I proceed?
Do we have any opinions from the committee members? Ms. Rosenbarger?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I've just been raising my hand, I didn't know I was on your screen. I would like to hear all of that. I, I thought at the end of last meeting, yes, well, I wanted staff to prepare, write some notes, what looks good, what we're doing well, all of that. I think that's, I would love to hear it. I think we kind of skimmed over that first bullet in the agenda about criteria, so I would like to get in there on that, thank you.
Okay, my, one of my duties, I think, and Steven Lucas, Mr. Lucas's, is to keep an eye on the clock. So please go ahead, Ms. Rosenbarger, and touch on both items.
Sorry, switching screens real quick, I'll do a quick share screen to do this data. Okay, so it's just four maps. The first is median household income or household median income. This is by Census block group in the city. Minimize this for a second. This is just the key, so sometimes I think there are challenges with the red to green scale. What we did here is just to say the lowest income and the lowest median income census block groups are red, and the highest median income, household income census block groups are green. So that way you can see the scale. And the lowest being households where the income is 10,000 to 26,000. This I just did by dividing into five categories, which it does sort of automatically. I think a useful metric that we could add in here is what is the median income for the whole city, so that you can see that in comparison with the other data. We looked at the percent of the population who are black, indigenous, or people of color. And so the ranking here is, green is the lowest percentage, and red is the highest percentage. And that is more based on usually places And that is more based on usually places that have a higher percentage of black, indigenous or people of color have historically received less investment in terms of infrastructure. I don't have Bloomington specific data on that. That's sort of a nationally recognized trend. And so this goes from the lowest census block groups having between five and 13% people of color and the highest having between 33 and 67% people of color. And I don't know that I have much more to add about that. There are census categories where we could break this down into percent of the population that's Asian, percent of the population that's black or African American, percent of the population that's Native American or Alaskan Indian and and then also percent of the population that's Hispanic, which is an ethnicity, not a race. And so if you remember, I might have Mallory check real quick. I think Bloomington is 84% white, which would mean the median would be or the average is 16% people of color. So that means places where you see more than 16%, that that's a higher concentration than the average for the whole city. So percent of housing that is renter occupied is also an indicator that other cities use. So we put together this one, green being the lowest percent renter, red being the highest percent renter. I think there, I would say from my perspective, there were some surprises in here. This area on the southeast side of town, where if you look at an aerial map, that's actually, there are a lot of apartments in here. And maybe this area just south of Bloomfield Road. I think that's a bit surprising to see how high percentage of, of renter that is. And again, Bloomington on average, I believe is about 65% renter. So the orange and red would be above that average and the other colors are below the average. And our last one is the percent of households with no vehicle. And this is, all of this data comes from the census and these are estimates created using census data by a data company that specializes in that, since we won't have 2020 census data until sometime in mid 2020. And as we talked about last time, there are questions about how reliable that will be. But so this is a percent of households that have no vehicle or no access to a vehicle. And the highest being the red areas are 22 to 45% of households have no vehicle. The orange areas, I think, are also comprise a large number of census block groups and the larger of the city are 12 to 22% of households. That's all I put together.
Thank you for that. And then I think maybe you're going to tell us about the new projects that are being proposed.
You mean the request that were added to the list for this year?
Yes.
Yes. I, Mallory, would you be able to cover that?
And Mallory too, I'll, I'll jump in and say I'm happy to, to pull up those locations. I've got Google Earth ready to go if the committee would like to take a look at, at those two.
Okay.
Spots.
Yeah, that would be, that would be super helpful. So we had two additions to the spreadsheet, which is historically how we house and prioritize the, the projects that we recommend for funding. And so we had two additions this year and that is based on feedback that our staff received. The first one, I believe this is between 15th and 16th on Dunn Street, North Dunn Street. And I think that's, that's the portion right there. So when we originally sent out the rankings, I was just learning how to fill out each of the criteria. So find the data that I needed for the pedestrian level of, of service, which is part of the ranking criteria that we have used in the spreadsheet. And when we put this project in, we noticed that it quickly ranked near the top. This one is our third highest ranking project on, on the plan. And I believe we are going to be finishing some work on 17th Street. So that is an opportunity.
So this, this one is, if I can just ask, this is CS 68?
That is correct. Yes.
Thank, thank you, Mallory.
Yes. And so then CS 69, which I believe is, the name is failing me right now. Do you have that one pulled up?
I do. Give me just a moment. It's on Crescent.
That's number, that's number 36.
And for, for folks on the meeting, I'd like to post the, the list that we're referring to. Too many tabs. Okay, this is
Yes.
Along North Crescent Road. I believe the request is from Fountain Drive here at the south to Marquee Drive.
That's correct. Yes. And so I believe that was a discussed last, in the last council sidewalk committee, I believe that's how that made it onto the list or?
This, I believe actually came from a member of the public via U reports.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe they specified a side. I don't know. Looks like there may be some stretches on the east side here that, that do have some sidewalks. And I believe farther down to the south, there are sections without sidewalk either side. So. Yeah, they.
Mr. Lucas, am I right to say this is the area where we have the new affordable housing apartment complex, right? In that green space, as in a built out?
Yes, it's, it's workforce housing. Yes.
Workforce housing and it's got a trail. The developers put a trail in for a certain length of it. Could planning and transportation, maybe by next time, tell us to what extent that trail extends?
Can I just jump in real quick? The city actually has a project here. It's in design already to install a multi-use path along the east side of Crescent throughout the street stretch. That's probably a year or two away from construction, but I wouldn't recommend putting any funding towards this unless you want to also do something on the opposite side of the street.
I see. Okay. So we're going to have a continuous pedestrian path on the east side. We're running between Fountain and 17th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I should also point out that this project ranked 36th on our spreadsheet.
All right, great. Those are the two new ones that were added to our prioritization list by city staff. Is there anything in a preliminary sense, before we begin discussing the priorities of the, the committee members that we need to discuss, that we need to bring forward? Mr. Rallo?
Just to ask, planning and transportation, Ms. Rosenberg or Mr. Copper, what is your, in terms of priority, looking at this list? And you, and you haven't prioritized this according to the matrix right now of the various components of consideration. Is it, is it your opinion that we should go in a numerical order through the list? Is that, is that the preference of, of planning and transportation or, you know, as we proceed on this? Because we do hop around and we do it on the basis of sometimes anecdote, like we're aware of a problem and then we want to apply money there. But what's your preference?
I'm happy to start. Yes, thank you. I would say in theory, going in order would be my preference. But while I think the, the list has brought us toward using objective data, I think that the, the criteria are flawed and we do the best we can with it. And I, it's just really hard, I think, until we make changes to it, saying that we feel the most confident in only using that. I mean, I'm troubled that the criteria don't include median household income. That's probably the biggest one I would immediately want to see considered. So I would say it's hard. In theory, yes, but because I think it's imperfect. It's really, I, I guess I would pick median household income and population density. And I think the actual, the table right now uses a proxy for population density that's supposed to consider how dense it could be. But I think there are so many places that are already dense that really would immediately benefit from investment that instead of betting what might happen in the future, I, I would love for us to kind of recognize what is happening now. So that's a long answer to say, I think it's useful, but I am not set on following it in the exact order. I think if something is lower on the list, like really toward the bottom, there might need to be a lot of justification as to why we would go that way instead of something higher. And that's my long answer.
Thank you. I, I just had a comment, but I see that Councilwoman Rosenberg has one.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. Is, I mean, helping with this timeline, can we right this wrong? You know, can we correct the criteria for this round?
I think it depends. I know it's a yes. It just depends what timeline. Like we need to know when that deadline is. So is it tomorrow or is it in a month? That, that's.
Maybe, maybe I can chime in here. I, I can maybe describe how the committee process has worked in the past. And, and part of, I think what Kate's question is getting at is how long would it take staff to, to sort of reinvent the criteria and what impact that might have on the committee's usual timeline? At least the last several years, the committee has attempted to wrap up its work by the end of the, end of the year so that the funding recommendations could come to the full council at the start of, of that funding year. And that way the money was available for planning and administration staff to, to put these projects into motion and get as much done during construction season as possible. Depending on how long it would take to either completely reinvent or integrate new objective metrics into the ranking sheet. You know, if that took a month, two months, you would be looking at possible funding recommendations going to the council, you know, in April, May, June timeframe. And again, that, that's not impossible. It would just shorten the window that staff would then have to actually make progress on the, on the projects during the calendar year. Neil, I don't know if you've got any other thoughts or if that accurately summarizes how it might impact things kind of downstream.
That sounds accurate to me. The, the question comes in is basically depending on what, what gets prioritized, you then may not leave enough time to, you can't do both design and encumber construction funding before the end of the year, you know, so it does limit things a little bit, but it also may not be an issue depending on what gets prioritized.
Mr. Rallo?
Just to say that part of the criteria redo, I think, should include a couple of things. One is, a lot of areas of the city are well-served by sidewalks. So if we took the whole downtown, it's all served by sidewalks already. So that geographic area, you know, so I guess what I'm saying, there are some neighborhoods really well-served by sidewalks. Other ones there aren't at all. So that should be prioritized. That should be part of this matrix too. How well is that neighborhood served by sidewalks? So that maybe it could be given a score. And the other one is redundancy. So in other words, you know, we just saw, for instance, the sidewalk on Crescent Street, a sidewalk's going up on the east side or a path, do we really need one on the west side? Maybe we do. I don't know. But I think of a case of Union Street a couple of years ago, which I lobbied to take off between Third Street and 10th because there was already a sidewalk on the east side and we were, or west side and we were going to put one on the east side. And it's an easily crossed street. So there's no need to have that redundancy. So that redundancy should be examined by planning and transportation to make sure that we're not, you know, putting money towards something that we already essentially is well-served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rallo. Mr. Lucas is, shall we move to project priorities? And talk about the, the list that was presented to us?
That's, that's again typically what's happened at this point. The committee has historically identified those projects it's interested in and, and requested that staff prepare or get together kind of ballpark estimates to give at least a rough idea of what the, the full project cost might be. That, that include, would include design, right of way acquisition, sometimes utility or stormwater work and then construction. Again, the, the committee is, is free to make recommendations how it sees fit. So if, if one of the recommendations the committee would like to, to make or have in place is sort of a reexamination or a reinvention of the, the criteria, I could make that decision today. And then again, you've, you've heard how that might impact the, the timeline. If the committee is ready to, to move forward and look at specific projects it's interested in, it could use this as an opportunity to identify those, those specific projects, at which point you may need to hear from staff as to how long it would take to get information together. And Roy may be the best person to, to speak to that.
Thank you very much. And do I understand that what we need to prioritize is about 10 projects, five to 10 projects?
It's, it's really up to the committee. Again, I, I will remind the committee that there are two projects that received funding for design last year. And those projects may be where the committee wants to first consider putting additional funds. Beyond that, it's up to the committee to decide how many new projects it might like to, to look at. I will say the, the more projects that you all request information on, the longer I think it typically takes staff to get that together. And we, we are coming up on the, the end of the year here. So staff may be out for holidays or other planned vacations. So just keep that in mind.
I'm going to.
Oh, she has no vacation.
Oh, thank you. I was going to ask, Mr. Sims or Mr. Rallo, how many projects should we try to prioritize off of the list?
Well, oh, thank you. I, I think that's kind of difficult. One of the things I wanted to know is, first of all, the timeframe from Ms. Rosenberg, the Ms. Beth Rosenberg, which timeframe were we talking about with regard to you all starting updating the criteria?
I think it, um, adding.
I know it's already started to a certain extent, but.
Yeah. I think a month is plenty of time. Two weeks is maybe feasible. That's it. So two weeks to a month, if it included population density and median household income. Some parts of it would have to be location-based where you look at, we could look at a map and say, there's, this is a high-volume street that has sidewalk only on one side. So we would put it on the other. Or you might make a determination that it's a very low-volume street and you wouldn't prioritize, put it on the other. But so, yeah, I would say two weeks minimum.
Well, no, I was speaking more broadly, I think, with return, with regard to updating with equity criteria and, and that sort of thing. Okay, thank you. But I think, Mr. Chair, what I was getting at is depending on what we criteria is moving on and how we would like to get this processed and met by the end of this year in order to try to encumber funding, I think the best place to start, and I think Mr. Lucas, just maybe it's Mr. Lucas or Mr. Copper, just mentioned two projects where funds are encumbered for design. And then I think the next thing. And then I think the next thing with that would be looking at the funding for construction. Um, and I guess the goal here is not so much, the processes, you do design one year, then you do construction. Maybe the following, once you get the fundings and that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm a little Larry of carrying projects over from one set of criteria to the next set of criteria. Um, in particular, if funds are encumbered for design, if we spend the money for a design, we're pretty much committed at some point to do the construction, I think. Um, so there has to be a break in there somewhere, and that's um, I think where I'm at and what remains of the money that we, of our budgeted Monday, money. If you take away the encumbered amount, um, I guess I'm wondering how much is remaining. Um, and is it possible that what's remaining, we could do design and construction um for this next um budget year? And then kind of start fresh. I mean, I know that's kind of weird, but uh it seems like if you're gonna get new criteria and include equity and income as part of our own rating, um, it's gonna have to be a clean break somewhere. Um, but that's just kind of my thoughts, so. So to answer your question, Chair, no, sir, at this point, I haven't looked through it. I know, I'm assuming we'll have another meeting. Um, and I'll be prepared to have more prioritizations, but based on the funding that we have um available. And then we can see the cost of the projects.
Okay, gotcha. So, so does that, uh, I, I guess part of the question that I was trying to get to was what do we need to think about as far as how many projects? Do we need to select the projects today? Say, okay, we move to, you know, one to five or one to six or and then see how much that is coming out to be uh estimates? Or what kind of is our next move on uh moving this forward to select the priorities of our committee? Mr. Lucas, you got an opinion there?
I can chime in, although I, I see Committee Member Rallo may have something to uh.
Sorry.
Well, I, I just like to uh reiterate maybe what Councilman Sim said. I think uh, I'd like to know, can we, can we finish our priorities from last year by shifting funds, number one? And number two, can we give staff some kind of direction today about what to bring us next time in terms of construction cost estimated for maybe the top three or four or five projects on the list that we have? To make best use of our time next time.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I think that's what we need to be doing is that's, that's the direction that I think we need to do. Because then we're doing two things simultaneously and we're uh taking good use, using our time well, right? So.
And Mr. Copper may have information about the sidewalk projects from last year uh and what those construction costs may be. Neil, I don't know if uh you have those figures on hand, but the two projects, sidewalk projects that were uh either partially uh funded for design work or completely funded were uh the South Walnut Street uh project from Winslow to Ridgeview. And then uh sidewalk along Adams Street from Kirkwood to Fountain that was uh the lowest priority project. And uh, Mr. Copper, I don't know if you have uh any more information than what was included in your report on those projects.
Yeah, just a quick summary, the, so the 2020 council sidewalk funds, those are all um, you know, those are all completely spent at this point. The Adams Street sidewalk design, we only were able to partially encumber that design contract. So um, I'm, this rough numbers, if the total design contract was $60,000, you were only able to put $30,000 into it. So if you would like to use 2021 funds to complete the design of that, we're about $30,000. The Adams Street project also, um, we're expecting it will require some right-of-way acquisition, uh which is very hard to estimate what that will actually be at this point. But another, you know, could be up to $50,000 in right-of-way acquisition. Um, construction of that project would probably be uh, it might be challenging to do that within the same year as, as from starting design, considering there's right-of-way acquisition involved. But that, we're, we're guessing about $150,000 for construction of that. The other project, South Walnut Street, um, that design is fully encumbered. Um, I do think it would be reasonable to um, if you wanted to put money towards construction on that uh construction cost, just our initial conceptual estimates were a little over $200,000. The other, so basically you would, you probably won't have enough to completely finish both of those. Uh, but you also may not be able to put any money towards construction of Adams Street anyway, uh just with the timeline. And then the other thing I want to note is that um, the committee has done a pretty good job in the past of always having something in the works for design so that you don't reach a year where you don't have anything ready to build, where you're doing nothing but design. And so that you also don't reach a year where you have um, you know, nothing but construction where you don't get to do a lot. Uh, so it's good to have a mix in there.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, just to follow up on that, um, out of the chart for this year, um, the top six projects. So the first one is a project that's already funded by the city, is my understanding right, Neil? We're doing that work this summer.
Sorry, what's the first one?
Oh, sorry, Indiana Avenue, it's like the northwest corner of Third and Indiana. I never totally, I think it just means to improve it, okay? And then the two, three, four, five, sorry, the sixth one, which is actually CS dash six, 19th Street is funded um mostly, we'll have to find out if there are any gaps from the project commonly referred to as Motel Six. There might be funding gaps in that that we could find out about, or I don't know if it's far enough along for us to know. Um, and then I would say the others are really interesting projects. Um, South Overhill Drive, the second ranked is the only one I would say I would be interested to see if traffic calming would be a more appropriate tool for that space. Um, but anyway, so the North Dunn is interesting because it's just a one-block sidewalk gap where a lot of housing is being added. And then Gorley Pike, I think is really interesting, um, or compelling. This is a lower-income area and a connection to Miller Showers and Cascades Park. And then finally, the Palmer Street connection, not totally sure the feasibility, is a one-block connection in existing right-of-way. So it's um, this unbuilt section of city right-of-way that can connect to public streets. We could do that with um a path. But I think there are some design challenges with that one potentially. So anyway, so I guess with my earlier statement, I would say the top-ranked ones, there are some compelling elements in there. Compelling projects, thanks.
Mr. Rallo, thank, thank you, Ms. Rosenberg.
I think uh maybe as we proceed, since it's one o'clock, you know, maybe we should get some uh ballpark estimates on maybe the top three or four. I, I, I might leave off anything over a thousand feet long. Uh, you know, until we can really determine whether we should apply sidewalk funds to a sidewalk that's gonna be a thousand feet long. Because that's, I mean, my, in my estimation, that's gonna take several years of our budget to complete. Unless we want to proceed with, we're better off kind of dispersing money around to get smaller projects done than to you know, double down and try to spend two or three years of a sidewalk budget just for one project. That's, so could we, could we get kind of a ballpark estimate for the ones that you mentioned? Uh, Ms. Rosenberg, uh, for next time to, to consider in terms of construction costs and?
Yes, so I'll talk with Neil and Roy are the champions of the ballpark figures. And um, the, the Gorley Pike is the only one over a thousand feet. And there was recently a development there that would actually reduce it, which is great, the total distance needed. Um, as well as I think there could be a consideration of, you know, you could take it to Old 37 or you could take it to college. So I think there's a natural possible break in there as well to, to phase that or to say, we only want to look at this one section for now.
So, so we should leave it in? Good. Yeah. Okay, that sounds good.
Thanks.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Sims.
I just wanted to quickly say, how much is it, would it be an encumbrance on staff? Like Councilmember Rallo said, if we just got some estimates on, say, the top, I don't know, 10 maybe too many. Um, but understanding that the Indiana Avenue won't be part of that list because it's been funded elsewhere. And I think that'll give us a, a good ballpark. And if that's too many, I understand that. So maybe it's the top five or six. Um, but my next question is, where are we at on the 14th Street um project? At CSO five from Madison to Woodburne. Uh, we had a lot of discussion on that last year, so is that design or where are we at specifically on that project? And I recall that was an area that had no walks, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that, that project um has been awarded for construction. You've already paid for that and um, uh coordinating with uh me, Development Block Grant Funds.
Okay, and that's why it's in green? Okay, I'm trying to keep my legends going on a couple of different screens, so, okay, that answered my question. Um, but I'm like Councilmember Rallo, if we, if it's not too much trouble for you all to just give us those estimates on the top five or six. And then I think um, you know, we can talk about revenue and get to planning and move forward in our next meeting.
All right, do we need a motion to uh, to uh make that uh an official suggestion or request?
Well, could I just ask, uh, Roy, is that doable? I mean, I, or, you know, we're kind of giving you a vague number, five or six. I mean, how many feasibly do you think you can, you can come up with?
Uh, uh, Roy Aitken with planning, transportation, by the way.
Thank you.
It's, it, it depends what my timeframe is. When, when, when would you like this all by?
Next meeting is gonna be, wh- when do we think we could have a next meeting? Is it gonna be after January 1st?
I think, and I don't want to speak for Roy, but I, I imagine that it would be tough for, for uh all the staff involved here to, to do anything uh like what the committee's asking before the, the start of the new year. Um, and I'd recommend a meeting uh either beginning or, or middle of January, uh, which may give Roy enough time to, to look at these uh, these locations. And may also, uh, even if the committee didn't uh implement any new criteria, uh may provide uh Beth or, or other planning staff time to uh put together recommended uh metrics that maybe the committee wants to recommend for use next year. Um, if it, if it doesn't feel right for those.
Mr. Aitken, if we say middle of January, how many projects should we ask uh to, to be reasonable for you to uh give us the numbers on?
Um, yeah, I, I think that, well, definitely the top five, and I think that's where we would start. And it sounds like you're, you have an interest in kind of going down the list and keeping the structure of the list. So I think we could probably get to the top 10 um by that time, uh, so we can try to get some numbers. These are all gonna be conceptual estimates because we won't have survey and everything like that, so.
These are ballparks.
Ballpark, yeah, figures. So I think we could probably get you a, a number to get you in the ballpark with the top 10 in that timeframe.
Okay, that's fantastic. All right. Uh, again, I'll ask that question, do we need to make a motion to do this, Mr. Rallo? So sorry.
I don't think we need a motion. I think that's staff is, is self-directed enough to, to, to come back and do that. But I, but we're still kind of hanging on Adams Street. And I wondered if in that same period of time, we could get an estimate on uh, you know, what it would, how much it would take to get right-of-way acquisition for that? If we wanted to go forward with it, because that's part of our consideration too. We're already, we're already invested in that.
Gotcha. That's in progress.
I want to continue that, uh, but, but we don't know, we don't know how much it's gonna be, so.
Can we include that uh estimate, Mr. Aitken, uh, if that's possible? When we meet next?
For which project? I'm sorry.
For the uh right-of-way acquisition for Adams.
Uh, I don't know if they've advanced far enough in design to give me an idea of how much right-of-way they actually need for me to get, to get that number for you in that time. And I, I don't think our consultant will have that ready for us in, in time. We can, we can try to take a look at it, but it'll be very ballpark.
Okay, is that, is that satisfactory, Mr. Rallo?
Yeah, I just, sure, that's great.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, then uh I would like to ask if uh, uh, planning and transportation then will give us an estimate on the top 10 projects. Is that correct? Stop me, stop me, stop me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, can I, can I clarify one thing? Is that with or without 19th Street? Do you want me to do an estimate for 9th Street? Where it seems like it's very likely that 19th Street's gonna be built by that development.
And opinion, opinions from staff?
I believe too, the Indiana, number one, uh, staff mentioned too, that that may be funded through other, other sources, so.
I guess if they're gonna be funded through other sources, I'm not sure you need to do the work and give it to us. I, I, I wouldn't, I don't want to make you do any, any work that you don't need to, uh, Mr. Aitken.
That's where I wanted to, if I could chime in for just a second. It sounds like we're, you know, we're gonna look at, I would say Adams and Walnut, the two that are already in design and see if we can clean up the numbers a little bit uh for next time. And then within that top 10, there's a few that are, that are already funded, that of course we won't, we won't put together estimates for those. I'm curious if there are any others in that top 10 that you just definitely want us to skip, that there's just not interest in. Um, uh, Ms. Rosenberg had mentioned that Overhill was kind of surprising that it's at the top of the list. Uh, I mean, we can do an estimate for it, but if, if there's agreement that it's uh not gonna be a high-priority project, then I would hate for us to spend time going through that exercise.
Mr. Rallo.
Could we, could we have both? Could we have, how much is traffic calming and how much is the sidewalk? Because I see it as a decent connector for, I mean, uh, so that area is gonna be a, a walkway for people to get to the new hospital. So I see a lot of people who are gonna be employed at the hospital, maybe living up there, walking that, that route. And so there's probably gonna be more pedestrian traffic up to the Seventh Street where you get, you know, you can, you can get it underneath um, whatever, 46, right, uh, the bypass. So uh, could we have the numbers on both, like what a sidewalk could cost versus the um, you know, some kind of traffic calming?
Yes, I, I, I mean, that's certainly possible. I think, you know, given the, given the number of estimates we're now talking about, I, I, I'll just maybe say these will be even, even more ballpark. Um, maybe to start out with, so for the next meeting, you know, these numbers are not gonna, they're gonna be even less refined than usual so that we can then refine it down. And then if we need to, you know, take a closer look at some of them, we can. But, you know, doing a dozen detailed cost estimates is gonna, is, is a fair amount of work.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so that, is that a, is that a, you're gonna give us a, a ballpark in a ballpark number on those? Is that, is that okay for everybody? Mr. Rallo?
Well, you know, again, I suspect there's a fair number in there over a thousand feet. Uh, so that's gonna be a substantial amount of money, but maybe it's worth knowing. You know, maybe it's worth knowing so we can decide whether or not to remove them from the list, find other funding, whether they're applicable for MPO, you know? So we may as well just go down the list. I mean, it seems staff's preference that we go down the list, that's the priorities that they feel are important, so.
Let's shoot for that, yeah. Can we shoot for that, Mr. Copper? Okay, okay, thank you. All right, um, so I think then we've agreed that uh we're gonna look at that subset of uh on the prioritization list. And I believe now we need to go to public comment. And so, Mr. Lucas, uh, I'll remind the public, if you And so, Mr. Lucas, I'll remind the public, if you want to weigh in and comment on the sidewalk committee prioritization in our discussion, raise your hand or indicate in the chat that to Mr. Lucas that you want to make a comment. And I think maybe we could keep our comments to two minutes or less. Thank you.
I do have a request from Deborah Meyerson to comment. You should now be unmuted and ready to go.
Thank you, Ms. Meyerson. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate the thoughtful discussion today amongst council members and input from staff. I appreciate the report that Mr. Stasberg has produced. And value that equity is a more prominent part of the discussion now. And look forward to the revised considerations that staff will be devising in early 2021. And just, I'm a resident of Mr. Rallo's district and I certainly value and appreciate both his service to the sidewalk committee and the sidewalks that have been built in my neighborhood and surrounding areas over the years. But I do feel that the priorities for how council members on the sidewalk committee, how they consider priorities for sidewalk projects would benefit from that equity consideration. Because there are so many folks who, you know, depend on walking and transit that they access by walking and having safe places to do that is, is very important. So I just want to say thank you for this discussion and I look forward to continuing evolution of that to have a strong equity consideration for how these funds are spent.
Thank you, Ms. Meyerson. Mr. Lucas, is there anyone else in the public that wants to make a comment?
Yes, we also have Mark Stasberg, who should now be ready to comment.
All right, Mr. Stasberg, if you'd like to go ahead, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you all to committing to moving forward with greater equity in your new criteria in the next year. And I look forward to how that plays out and what systematic changes we can work.
Thank you, Mr. Stasberg. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody else?
I don't believe so.
All right. Do we then want to look at a future meeting date? As we move along in our agenda?
It certainly would, would make things a bit easier, I think, for all involved to know when the committee would like to meet next. Again, kind of looking around the timeframe of, of a month from now. There's Tuesday, January the 12th, or Thursday, January 14th, be roughly a month from now. And again, if F, Roy, Neil, those are the, the first, that would be the second week in January. Looking to the third week, January 19th or January 21st would be the Tuesday and Thursday of that week.
And anybody have any restrictions or comments? Yes, Mr. Sims?
I was going to move January 12, Zoom meeting at noon. But I didn't want to step on anyone's toes.
I'm perfectly well. Does January 12 on Tuesday at noon work for everybody? Okay, please set that, Mr. Lucas. And it looks good for, Ms. Rosenbarger too, from the city. So please do that. So January 12 on a Tuesday at noon will be our next meeting. And thank you for that. Anybody, other matters that we need to consider at this point? I'd like to thank the city, planning and transportation, always excellent job from planning and transportation. So thank you very much, all of you. Thank you. And so with that.
I will chime in. Sorry, I will chime in to say, I'm, I'm assuming we will still be operating via Zoom at that point. Who knows what, what the world will look like in a month, but we will, of course, post notice of the meeting and the location, which at the moment I, I assume will be Zoom. So changes will, will make that known.
Okay, I think we'll still be zooming too, unless we all go get shots quick.
Move adjournment.
I think we should adjourn. So thank you all. I appreciate it. It was a great discussion. I learned a lot and.